Hopefully let them show him on the screen somewhere. All right. There we go.
Can you see me and hear me?
We can see you in a little box, but we can absolutely hear you, my friend. There you go. There it is. Something like that. Welcome, Mayor, and thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for leading this wonderful organization. Thank you to all the board members and staff here at Atlanta Housing. Thank you for your leadership and partnership on behalf of the people of Atlanta that you're providing services and housing for. Thank you so much. I won't take much of your time. I did want to step on here to bid a great farewell as Duriya is leaving the board. She's serving out the end of her last, her term now in the end of this meeting, being her last meeting as a Board of Commissioner for the Atlanta Housing. I'm just so grateful for you saying yes when I asked you, Duriya. Thank you for your leadership when you served in the City of Atlanta as the COO, and thank you for all the things that you've done in my transition team and as your guidance that you provided me personally on this journey as mayor. You guys have done a remarkable amount of work, so I wanted to take this time out of my schedule to jump on here at your last board meeting to say thank you and to just continue to sing your praises and the teamwork that you all have done.
I am stunned. Thank you so much, Mayor. I mean, this is such a surprise, and it's a beautiful, lovely surprise. You know, when you said, would you ever come back to city government? I said, no, but I'm willing to do, I'm willing to work on something that really matters to you. And that was housing. So it has been a privilege. It has been a privilege to serve. It has been such a joy, and I am grateful for the opportunity to have made an impact in such a central part of your platform and something so close to your heart. Thank you so much for the confidence you've placed in me and for taking the time today. It just blows me away.
Yeah, and Courtney English is also on here. So he joined. We all said that we wanted to make sure that we, you know, thanked you together.
Courtney, you've been a great partner. Thank you for your leadership. Wow. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Dickens. Thank you, Courtney.
All right. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Thank you for joining us.
Chairman Stewart, if we could, I know the mayor's leaving the call, but if we could just take a moment of privilege to thank Commissioner Faruki on behalf of Atlanta Housing. I've had the opportunity to, I would say, labor with Commissioner Faruki for over seventeen years. And what reminds me of this moment is something that Eleanor Roosevelt said. And she said, "A good leader inspires people to have confidence in the leader, but a great leader inspires that people to have confidence within themselves." And so I want to thank you personally for the impact that you've had on my life and the imprint that you've made, not on my life, you know, years past at the City of Atlanta, but in this current capacity as CEO and the agency that we all serve. And so we want to share our thanks to you as well. I can't hobble to the mic, but Duane and Maria will share a memento with you.
So in the interest of, I know commissioners have some comments. We'll save the comments and we'll allow Duriya to get herself together, and then she'll have comments, I'm sure, at the end. Let's do the meeting, and then we'll follow up and do thank yous from the rest of the board at that time. That's okay.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I'll just circle back real quick and just do the quick reminder that the link to the meeting agenda, Board Resolution and Presentation Materials is available for view by the public by accessing the link on the Atlanta Housing website at www atlantahousing.org/notices.
Awesome. All right. So I think I did my introduction, so I'll just run to the quorum call. So will the interim general counsel take the role to determine a quorum for the meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Chairman Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Kirsch.
Here.
Commissioner Alvarado.
Here.
Commissioner Elliott.
Here.
Commissioner Faruki.
Still here.
Commissioner Hooker.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Mr. Chair, there is a quorum.
All right. We have a full house today. The agenda has been presented to the board for review and comment. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Okay. Mr. Chair, based on the recommendation of the Audit and Finance Committee, the board must vote to approve a change to the agenda to add Resolution Number 2519 regarding the comprehensive budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, to the proposed consent agenda.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended to add Resolution 2519 to the proposed consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All right. So I think I got a motion from Commissioner Martin and a second from Commissioner Kirsch. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I think I heard all ayes, so there were no opposed, opposition or abstentions. The motion is carried.
Okay. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the regular Board of Commissioners meeting held on May 28, 2025, for review and comment. Are there any proposed corrections to the minutes of the regular Board of Commissioners meeting?
All right. Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 28, 2025? Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. So moved by Commissioner Elliott and seconded by Commissioner Kirsch. Is there any discussion related to the motion to approve the minutes of the May 28, 2025 meeting? Hearing no discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I think I heard all ayes. No opposition, no abstentions, so the motion is carried. Do we have any members of the public who have signed up to speak or provided comments in advance of today's meeting?
No, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, no members of the public have signed up to speak, nor did we receive any comments in advance to present to the board.
All right. Well, this ends public comment. I'll just use what my colleague Commissioner Kirsch says. You guys is lost. Public is always welcome to provide comments and feedback to this board. So we will now move to the consent agenda. Please be advised that the Board of Commissioners in September 22, 2021, meeting, we approved a budget, approved the consent agenda protocol. There are three resolutions that are below that received unanimous votes at the Board of Commissioners Real Estate Committee meeting on June 18, and one that received unanimous votes of approval at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting that was held today. The collective group of resolutions on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion to adopt all resolutions and the affirmative majority vote of the Board of Commissioners. If discussion on any resolution or resolutions is desired by a commissioner, the commissioner must make that desire known to the chair immediately following the reading of the consent agenda items, and the resolution or resolutions will be removed from the consent agenda or, and considered separately or at the discretion of the chair. A discussion may occur prior to the vote on the consent agenda resolutions. Moreover, if a commissioner simply wants his or her vote to be specifically recorded on any particular item, separate votes may be taken on the resolutions. Will the interim general counsel identify the three resolutions on the consent agenda for the record?
Okay. Commissioners, before you are copies of the following consent agenda resolutions. Resolution Number 2519, Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to approve its comprehensive budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, and other related matters. Resolution Number 2520, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to revise the ground lease agreement with the City of Atlanta for 1110 Hill Street and zero, rather, Inglewood Avenue, Southeast Atlanta, Georgia, and to submit an amendment to the previous disposition application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for Inglewood North. And Resolution Number 2521, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to enter into an agreement with United Way of Greater Atlanta to provide program coordination services for short-term housing assistance.
All right. May I have a motion to consider, adopt, and approve the consent agenda containing Resolutions 2519, 20, and 21?
So moved.
All right. So moved by Commissioner Faruki and seconded by Commissioner Hooker. Is there any discussion related to the consent agenda resolutions?
I think we can, at this point, at the chairman's pleasure, have the short presentation.
So yes. Phineas, if you would like to come up and give a short presentation on the budget, and then we will vote from there.
Ms. Taylor, I would recommend starting with the budget summary. I don't think you need to cover the assumptions again.
Yeah. We're going to start on budget summary. The fiscal year 2026 budget is a $453.3 million balanced budget. We are going to use the lion's share, or eighty-three percent of the budget, for housing and real estate development-related activities. And in addition, we are going to spend close to $2 million for resident engagement and empowerment activities. And as you will see, the fiscal year 26 budget is fifteen percent less than the fiscal year 2025 budget overall. You will see on this pie chart, most of our funding source is housing choice vouchers. And as you see here, the current year housing choice vouchers accounts for seventy-five percent of our funding source, and fourteen percent would be housing choice vouchers from prior-year funds or our accumulations. In addition, we will have two percent of public housing funds and three percent of CFP funds and one percent choice neighborhoods. And that, those are direct funding source that account for ninety-five percent of our total funding source. In terms of the total uses, worth $453 million of our funds, we expect to create or preserve over 2,500 units. That puts us well on track of achieving our five-year strategic goal of creating or preserving 10,000 units. And as you can see on this chart, most of our, majority of our funds will go for vouchers, whether it's a tenant-based vouchers or project-based vouchers, or we call it home flex. That total accounts for about fifty-seven percent of all of our funds. In addition, we will spend close to a quarter of all of our funds for real estate development-related activities. This chart shows the breakout of housing assistance and operating subsidies. And as you see here, majority of our housing assistance funds will be used for tenant-based vouchers. And another major use is project-based vouchers or home flex. As one of our top priorities is to continue robust real estate development activities, as you can see here, we are going to devote $104.4 million for real estate development. And the majority, or $60.2 million, will go for revitalization of former AH communities. In addition, we are going to allocate $5 million to assist 234 first-time home buyers to realize their dream of homeownership. And that concludes my fiscal year 2026 budget overview. Do you have any questions or comments?
So I'll just join in. So first, thank you for this, you know, thoughtful budget. And we're excited about the work that's been put in to prepare us for, you know, what comes ahead, and particularly breaking it down into a, you know, first half of the year, second half of the year, communication, not only of that, but also just the scenarios that we can, you know, will be able to, we've analyzed to be prepared for anything that happens should. But I won't even make any comment on that. I will say that I really want to make sure that we recognize, I know we've recognized her for her service in total, but I think specifically for her leadership throughout this budget cycle. Commissioner Faruki has been very, very focused and specific about ensuring how we go about this process. And she's been a giant in just making sure that we were not only handling the smoothness of this process previous to this year, but also just being considered about how you spend the time, right? That if it's late, then summer is not fun. And so summer is what we want to have for you guys after we submit this budget, and that we did not go through some of the things that we had had in the past. And so it's not, in no small function of your work to get us to the place where we also got an award. I know we were recognized and recognized for the award that you got for our budget in the Audit and Finance Committee, but I want to make sure I just elevated that for now. And so I just want to say thank you so much for your work as our chair, and we will miss you, and I'm appreciative of all the hard work that then leads to this.
We will really, sorely miss you, Commissioner Faruki. You've been such a great pleasure to work with. And you are so knowledgeable and so, you're so no-nonsense. And just directly, and cut to the chase, and the points that we need to be aware of, you just pointed out, just like pinpointed, so fast. And, you know, we really appreciate you and all your guidance and support.
Well, thank you, Phineas. It's been really a pleasure to work with you, both from the beginning of your transition to your building a team. And I'm only knowledgeable about very small, very few things. And the fact that you guys do the work, the complexity of the housing work that you do, the families you serve, operating in this environment. I mean, honestly, that is the hard, difficult work to sustain, carry, and commit to, and go do every day, you know, for each of us commissioners. The pieces that we can bring from our experience are really about supporting that. And that's, the central work is still the work that you guys do. It's been an honor, a privilege, a pleasure to see so much leadership growth on this team too, Terry. When you said seventeen years, I was like, wait, what? Really? Yeah, but you're right, you know. It has been a really long time since I've seen you in many different roles. And when you were appointed, I was, I felt a lot of pride. And since then, it's been amazing to see the leader that you have grown into, you have stepped into in this role, both because of the agency, but also the, you know, leader at this time for your team and for the work that this organization does. And, you know, all of the expertise you bring. So I've valued my partnership with you. I want to thank our chair, Larry, who has also grown with us, you know, as commissioners. When we came into this role, we weren't sure what this, how to add value, how to create impact, how to make sure that we were doing what we were supposed to be doing from a fiduciary governance perspective, as well as to bring whatever experience we can while recognizing that we're not the experts, you know. We are really here to improve the sustainability, accountability, integrity, and impact of this agency. And it has been really an honor to be a part of that. So, you know, thank you for, thank you for all of that.
Any other comments before we vote on the consent agenda? All right. With that said, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I did not hear any opposition or abstentions, so the motion is carried. And I think we have a report now. So Ms. Maya Hadari, if you want to give us your report, you have the floor.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So we come before you this afternoon just providing a little bit of information about a new submission that housing authorities have to do, and it's specific to our RAD program and our RAD projects in terms of assessing the replacement reserves as well as the financial health of those nineteen properties. So, next slide. So we're seeking your acknowledgement that we've reviewed information on the operating budgets, an assessment of the financial health of our RAD portfolio. Just a little bit of background. So the RAD program is a voluntary HUD program that allows public housing authorities to convert existing public housing units to the Section 8 platform or the Housing Choice Voucher platform. And the belief is that the Housing Choice Voucher program provides a more stable funding stream. And so in our history, we began doing RAD conversions in approximately 2018. And to date, we've converted nineteen of the former mixed-income communities that included public housing units to RAD, with the most recent conversion happening in the fourth quarter of 2024. Again, under this new requirement or under the new notice that HUD issued this year, we look at the financial health of each of the nine properties, the nineteen properties, as well as whether the replacement reserves have been deposited into accounts in accordance with the RAD conversion commitment, which is the RCC. This is just a picture of some of our RAD sites. And this is a map that gives you the locations of our nineteen. And this is a map that gives you the locations of our 19 RAD properties. And so as I mentioned, we're coming to you and bringing this information forth so that we can respond to a HUD notice, and that notice requires all PHAs to determine whether deposits are being made to the replacement reserve accounts in accordance with the RCC, which is the RAD conversion commitment, as well as assess the financial health of our RAD developments. And so our staff really rolled up their sleeves and did analysis of a lot of information to create the, the spreadsheets that we're going to go through with you. And it was to determine whether the replacement reserves were in accordance with the RCC, and whether the owners were making the required deposits, as well as looking at cash flow and determining whether their financial health was positive. And so I'm going to call up my colleague, Robin McCreary. She's our Director of Asset Management, and her and her team really did a phenomenal job crunching a lot of information to provide you all with this analysis.
Thank you, Maya, and good afternoon, board. If we can go to the next slide. And so as Maya has explained, the HUD PIH notice required the PHAs to have their board review the operating budgets of the RAD portfolio. So what we did is prepared an analysis. We reached out to the owners and obtained all of their operating budgets. Within these spreadsheets, we consolidated the operating budget activity into one spreadsheet analysis. So here on screen, starting with the 2025 operating budget and replacement reserve analysis, where we started with this, you know, listing out the RAD-HAP effective dates, and so that's the effective date of the agreement, the year that the substantial completion was done, total RAD units, as well as total units. And so with the analysis, we determined, we reviewed the RCC years, which is the RAD conversion commitment letter, to determine what the replacement reserve requirements are. Those requirements, replacement reserve requirements are set by HUD, and they're required to be deposited monthly. And so after determining that, we did consolidate all of the budget information, and just put it in a format that is easy to digest, and we gathered the operating budgets, just simple NOI, and then to get to a cash flow number, we subtracted or reduced the NOI by capital expenditures, the debt service, and the replacement reserve requirements. With this net cash flow, we asked the question, is net cash flow positive? And we have a, a series of yeses and nos. What we were, what we were determining with this portion of the analysis is, is the property generating enough net operating income to cover capital expenditure, debt service requirement, and most importantly, still make the required deposits to the replacement reserve. And so next section of the analysis is the replacement reserve balance analysis. With this analysis, we took the actual balance in the replacement reserve, and we took the budgeted amount, which the owners were projecting for 2025, what the deposit should be, and we reduced that by the capital expenditures to determine if there is sufficient balance in the replacement reserve with the proposed or projected replacement reserve deposits to cover the capital expenditures. And then there's a series of, there's a question, you know, there's a series of yeses and nos that, that kind of go through this analysis. So that's just analysis. I'll kind of highlight some of the key items, or key outliers. Cosby Sphere, for one. That one is a project that closed last year, last quarter, November of last year, and so this project is currently under construction. Building is completely empty, no replacement reserve requirements there. Eastlake High Rise, wanted to highlight here that this building was, reached substantial completion in April of 2025. So there is no beginning balance in the replacement reserve, because there was no replacement reserve deposit requirements. James Allen Place, highlighting it here, as you see, there's positive cash flow, and there are sufficient funds, there appears to be sufficient funds in the replacement reserve account to address capital improvement needs, but just wanted to highlight here, because the team has actually expounded this analysis to not just review the budget, but the actual activity, and we noticed that some of the deposits were underfunded. There were about four or five months of deposits that were not made as, as in accordance with the RCC. We reached out to the owner, communicated that, issued a notice of noncompliance, and are working with them to make sure that they fund the deposits, to get them up to the correct balance. Next slide. Thank you. Here, the outlier here, I would bring your attention to Castleberry Hill Two, and we show that it has negative cash flow. If you look up a couple of rows before that, you see a large debt service payment of about 2.2 million. That 2.2 million was, is what the owner included in their operating budget, and that reflects a conversion of the construction loan to permanent phase. Their operating budget did not include the funding source for that paid, for the paydown or the conversion of that debt. So just excuse the numbers, we don't foresee any issues with them being able to make the required replacement reserve deposits. Next slide. And so the next, the next two sets of analysis, analyses are for the 2024 and 2023 operating budget. We performed a similar analysis over those years as well, but wanted to focus more on 2025 for the presentation today, because here, we're at the point where we have actual data, so we've, we've done an additional analysis that we haven't, have not included in the presentation today, that really is honing in on what the actual activity is while the HUD notices asking us to review the operating budget. No, that was my fault, so I'll pause and see if there are any questions, or if there's anything that I can clarify.
Excuse me. So just to be sure I understand, but for the conversion of the construction loan to a post-construction loan, we're not concerned going forward about Castleberry Hills Two?
Yes, that is correct.
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for the refined presentation, and, you know, giving us confidence that these are all in good standing and helpful just to understand the assumptions and how we can glean what it means. So thanks for making time to share it with the board.
You're welcome.
You're here. Just one more question. Once HUD gets this information, they've reviewed the report, what happens next with it? What do they do, or is there anything else done? Is that just it?
I think HUD is just using this information to gauge the performance of the RAD portfolio. So we, this is our first time having to submit this, so we, we're not sure of what the next, those next steps will be, but they have, in the notice, it does state that if we foresee any challenges with any other property or any outliers, that we just need to notify them. So I think they're just using this to, you know, gauge the RAD portfolio, since it's fairly new, the program is fairly new.
Okay. And then one last question for anybody on the team. What do we think the future of RAD is, and how do we think we're doing relative to other public housing authorities? I know it was an innovation when they did it.
No, absolutely. So I will tell you, I think we are in a season of uncertainty, but what we have seen is the administration is moving towards converting public housing to privately-owned housing. So that gives me a sense that the RAD program will be one that may be with us for a little while longer, from an encouragement standpoint, which is a good thing, of course, for Atlanta Housing, because we still have projects within our pipeline that would have the potential to convert over to RAD, which is the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. I will always say Atlanta Housing is, is doing excellent in comparison to other housing authorities. And one of the things I can actually have a testament to that is we, we just recently hosted the Council of Large Public Housing Agencies, and it gave us an opportunity to not just talk about our work, but showcase our work. And so it was really evidence among my other peers, specifically at the board meeting, that it was clear that Atlanta Housing is not only open for business, but when it comes to the RAD program and our development portfolio, that we are more advanced than other housing authorities.
I had that sense from the conference that I went to earlier this year, but I just wanted to hear from you all, because you get a lot more exposure, obviously.
Oh, absolutely. And I'll tell you, it's a source of pride, and my team will tell you that I always said, let's stop bragging on ourselves, but let's let other people brag on us. And that is the state I believe that we're in now.
Can I ask a question? Is there some sense that the MTW program designation might be at risk? And if that happened, what would be the implications for us?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So what, what I'm seeing, and I, back in April, I had an opportunity to represent the Public Housing Authorities Directors Association in a meeting with our new Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary, Ben Hobbs. And one of the reasons I was invited with the incoming president was to really talk about the successes of the MTW program, because the administration is looking to have more local flexibilities, and a lot of the industry groups are looking to extend that as well. So Atlanta is being utilized as an example, and not just my work in the past, but the work that we're currently doing today, and being able to utilize MTW to make sure our families are moving towards economic mobility and self-sufficiency, as well as advance our development program.
And you know, if I might add, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, but this goes to something that I think we've said before, our own local media doesn't fully understand the quality of our work in the whole public housing space nationally. And I don't know how we can continue to get those messages across the communications team otherwise, but I think we have to keep, especially in this environment, keep getting those messages out in any, every channel that we can. So, thank you.
I 100% agree, and I will say, if we think back to communications when this board was first put in place, to the communications strategy as well as activity we have now, we are doing a different and more enhanced job of telling the story of our work, and we look at it not just from units produced, but what that impact actually have on the people we serve and the communities that we've been invited into. But there's more work to be done, and so we're continuing to ramp up those efforts.
All right, any other comments? All right. Then we'll, thank you for your report, and then I'm sure we have a report, but we don't have a report from our CEO and President?
Well, with, with your permission, our CEO has already given an abbreviated report about three of the slides that you would have seen, so we will submit the slides to you in, in a written form, so that we can go on and on a Commissioner Faruki.
That's great. All right, well then, this is the time where we get to do comments from our commissioners, and so I will just start, if anyone wants to give any comments from the commissioners' seats.
Well, Daria and I have had the pleasure of knowing each other for, for several years, but I think this is the, the most directly we've worked with each other, and I want to thank you, as our CEO said so eloquently, your, the quality of your leadership, your integrity, the sharpness of your questioning and observations, I would think have really helped not only hone the agency, but hone our work as a board as well. And it's been a tremendous contribution, tremendous pleasure to serve with you, and we are going to miss you. So we expect you to call in on an occasional public moment, so let us hear your voice from time to time, and much success in the future.
I may have to sign off a public comment, just to make sure.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah, well, you know how to do that now, so. But much success to you in the future. Don't be a stranger.
Okay, I wrote mine down, because I wanted to make sure I said what I wanted to say to you. As a colleague, I have appreciated your comments and your candor. When you have something to say, you speak your mind, and we give you an expert opinion. Your leadership and your guidance and expertise will be of use. Thank you for your service to Atlanta Housing.
All right. I just wanted to say, I've enjoyed working with you, and best wishes to you, okay?
And I'll build upon the comments. I think when, when four of us joined, we were joining the late Commissioner Harris, and Commissioner Elliott, and then Commissioner Trailer, and of the four of us joining, I'd had the privilege of working alongside Larry on the transition team, I'd had the pleasure of working with Doug for many years in his leadership role at the Atlanta Regional Commission, but I only knew Daria on Twitter.
Which I have not.
Which we have all since left. We don't even call it that anymore. But we would like each other's posts, and I knew we shared a lot of the same values, and I knew that she did exceptional work at the city, but had never had the honor of working with her, and it has just been such a pleasure. I want to thank you for your leadership, to work alongside you, to learn from you. And the, you know, to echo Doug's comments, the, you bring a really significant sense of what we might need to be thinking about around the corner, risks that we should be anticipating, and it just really brought such a rich perspective that I think has made us all more effective, and you leave big shoes to fill. So, really grateful. Thank you. We will miss you.
I'll just say, I'll, I'll go against my own brain, not be as pan- pandemic, as I usually am, but I will, for being the professional, you, you made a, you better, you better, you better, you be that, that light that we need, you know, to realize the truth that we can, that we can obtain for ourselves, for the people we serve in the city. I get to follow all of those statements. So I already made a comment about her leadership as the Audit and Finance Committee. I also want to thank you, before I say anything else personally, for your service in helping us get our CEO. You served when I asked about being in charge of our CEO search, and you did it ably and capably, and we, I think, have benefited from the results of that search, and the elevation of this organization, I think, is, is a, is a direct result of that. And so, so thank you for answering my call. Personally, this is, I think when they say, hey, it makes you elevate your game, we came on this board, you know, a lot of my experience had been working for Mayor Dickens, then City Councilman, as his chief of staff, and we did a lot of work in inclusionary zoning and stuff that made me feel like I kind of knew a little bit about affordable housing. And then I worked on the Housing Commission, which is really more policy-focused, I had no idea the, the enormity of this organization, and what we do. And so when I came on, I was like, oh yeah, I'll just give my opinions, right? And I'll fill in a couple of gaps, say a couple of wise comments, and, and then say yes to things, right? And quickly, as we, even as we first started with Civic Center, that was our first thing, and hearing you give what were really wise and thoughtful comments about how we should be proceeding in that, made me say, oh man, I got to study. And, and then I needed to go do some research, to say, who is this Daria Faruki? She's so wise and so smart, and I, I didn't, I don't study, I didn't study previous administrations and what they did and how they did it. And so I quickly learned about just how valuable and, and important your role to this city has been. And so I think when we went to have happy hour, it was immediately apparent that I needed to learn from you, and I have. And so I'm honored that you guys have allowed me to be in this seat. It's not something I take lightly. And in, in light of where I, I came from, the, the fact that you allowed me to grow into this role, and into the space to be able to speak a little bit more eloquently three years later about the work that we do, is no small testament to your pushing and questioning and asking us to be our best selves. And so in that context, I just want to say thank you so much. Personally, my growth as a person and as a professional is, in, in a small part, a part of what you've done, and so I appreciate that. And with that, unless anyone else has a comment- that, unless anyone else has a comment for our Commissioner Faruqi, I would love to just say thank you so much, and we love you. All right. So with that, we can all come up and give her hugs and kisses before she leaves, but we do need to adjourn this meeting, because we actually have another meeting right after. So if there's no further business of the board, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Spoofed by Commissioner Martin and seconded by Commissioner Hooker. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? All right. Then I think the ayes have it. The time is 2:45 PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.
And sorry for the, we'll have a very quick West Side Affordable Housing Inc. meeting, and we'll proceed immediately.
Audio is recording, and the public has been let in.
So in the interest of time, I'm going to go ahead and, and proceed if the fishers are okay. I know that we provided the information via the Dropbox. And I know copies are coming in momentarily. And we had some, yeah, we had a little copying machine, issues going on earlier. Upgrades, upgrades have come. All right. So thank you. My name is Lisa Washington. I am the Secretary of West Side Affordable Housing, Inc. Before this special meeting, West Side Affordable Housing, Inc. is called to order, please consider the following announcements. We welcome the members of the public who've joined us in person, the Pecan Room, for this meeting, special meeting. We also welcome the members of the public who've joined the meeting in video, audio conference. A link to